Counsel, I will call this means to order for the record. It is November 24th, 4:31 PM. And we'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Kavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perro?
Here.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion as second to approve the agenda as, adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is agreed to. Next item is our consent agenda. Councilman Hoagland.
Yes. I don't think I've heard of any concerns with any of the issues on the consent agenda. So I move that we approve the consent agenda and the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all these papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved off the consent agenda. So we will move on to item number eight, department reports. And I will turn this over to Mr. Lavoy to give us the finance department quarterly financial update.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Good to see all the council members. It's been a while, so hopefully everyone's doing well. Again, appreciate the opportunity to present to you the quarterly update for November 2020 regarding really property taxes. I presented this, or provided this presentation to you a couple of weeks ago. That's 31 pages of presentation with information that we plan on going over tonight. And I wanted to really work with you guys today and allow you guys to ask questions about property taxes. This is an opportunity to kind of do a 101 on how property taxes work. I want you guys to be able to dialogue with each other, ask questions anytime. Please do not hesitate to interrupt me. There will be a few slides that I go through pretty quick because it's more informational purposes and I've provided that information to you. But again, at any moment in time, please do not hesitate to interrupt me on a slide, interrupt each other. Let's have dialogue. I want you guys to feel comfortable with how property taxes are managed here at the city of Meridian. So with that, our agenda today is going to cover again property tax 101, a little bit of information on levy rate history. Going to talk to you about a concept called property tax burden. We'll show you some information about some comparisons of property taxes amongst homes and then amongst cities as well. And then I'll give you an update on what we'll provide in our next quarterly update. And then says last for questions, but please, this is the interactive presentation. Questions throughout the whole thing would be awesome. I want you guys to really ask questions amongst each other, amongst me. If I can answer them, I'll do my best. If I can't, I'll get back to you in a timely manner. But please do not hesitate to interrupt and be interactive on this presentation. So with that, property tax 101, again, this is the same presentation I gave you guys in a PDF form. So there's nothing new that I'll be presenting to you, but we'll go over and touch basis on some of these. This slide here is an informational purposes slide. The most important thing here is that the state kind of governs what we do and Ada County kind of governs what we do. The state allows us to have the opportunity to increase our property taxes by 3% for the title. And then Ada County informs us what our assessed value is and Ada County informs us what our new construction value is. So again, the top line is our lever. The city has one lever to pull and that's the 3% arm. The second item on the screen, that is all controlled and managed by Ada County. We have zero input or decision authority on that second box. So again, just wanted to let you know that we do follow the state code and the state code is dictating how things are managed here at the city of Meridian. Property tax 101, the calculation. So how do we determine our levy rate in property taxes? We look at property taxes here at the city combining four components. The first component is what we call our base property taxes. This is following state code. This is determined by looking at our past three fiscal years and being able to capture the highest value of property taxes collected over those past three years. And then we can consider that our base tax for the upcoming year. So for fiscal 21, I looked at fiscal 20, fiscal 19 and fiscal 18 and said which of the three years had the highest property tax collections? I captured that value and I made that your base entry for fiscal 21. So that's how we start there. As a reminder that the city of Meridian, we manage the prop, base property taxes to align with what we call our current level of service. So we previously in the fiscal year determined what we wanted to provide our citizens through the budget process and we approved that to the citizens. That became our base budget for providing services for our customers and our citizens. If all things stayed static and we lived in the perfect world, when we had no more growth, no more inflation, no more change, those taxes would be able to satisfy all of our services from here to eternity because we would not need to increase anything or decrease anything per se. And we would have the revenue stream to maintain that level of service. Unfortunately, we all know that we don't live in that static world. We're constantly growing. We're the fastest growing city in the nation. We have inflation. So how do we pay for inflation? If this is our base revenue for our base levels of service, how do we pay for the increased fuels? How do we pay for increased healthcare? How do we pay for replacing the baseball field at, you know, Story Park? How do we pay for those things? And luckily, the state has allowed us to tap into what we call the 3% allowable. This is the one lever that we get to pull to determine whether or not we need additional revenues to help pay for additional things. And what I have always promoted here, this is our cost of doing business. We utilize this money to cover our cost of doing business, which includes rise in fuel costs, rise in healthcare, rise in wages. I mean, we just talked about some of the depreciation or replacement items. We use this cost of doing the business 3% allowable to help cover those costs. Because the base property taxes is what we use to keep the, keep the level of service going. The 3% allowable is what we use to help cover the cost of doing business for those levels of service. So that is a practice that we use here at the city of Meridian. That's not a practice that is a, you know, I can't say that's what all other agencies do, but that's what we do here. We want to make sure we live within our means and that's how we manage the 3% allowable. The third port, part of the property tax calculation is what's called new construction. Ada County informs us what has been added to our tax roll since last year. And then they say, hey, this is now an increase to your city. You have this new customer base or community base that you need to service. So we get the revenues from this function and we present it to you as counsel in the form of usually budget requests. So this would be the new fire officers, the new police officers, the new community development officers, the new whatnot because the additional impact to the city by growth has to be serviced in some form or fashion. We use this revenue to get those services to those new construction, those new customers that we have in our city. So that is how we manage those dollars. Those dollars do not go to pay for any cost of doing business. Those do dollars do not go back to our base to provide the current level of service. We as a city never want to become reliant on growth to pay for our current level of service. We want to live within our means. If we cannot provide the level of service within our base and our 3%, we should not be providing it from a revenue management standpoint. We use new money to pay for new growth directly related. And when we present the budget to you, we present it that way as well. You can only use new construction for those new requests. And then the fourth piece is annexation, which is a very small piece of our revenue pie. I'll show you what those, again, they're in the slides with you, but we get to obtain some revenue for new annexations. Again, another impact to the city by growing. We allow the city to use those dollars to fund those new resources necessary to meet the demand on the city based on those new additional growth, growth areas of the city. You put all four of those components together and that is what we get as property taxes. Again, basis for the current level of service, 3% is for cost of doing business. New construction and annexation is for new growth for the city of Meridian. And that is how we manage our revenue sources within the property tax calculation. So how does the county calculate our annual levy rate? Again, it's total property taxes that we just talked about, divided by the total levy or total property value that Ada County tells us. And that gets us to a certified annual levy rate. If you did that for fiscal 21, this is what the numbers would look like. Again, we have been approved this levy rate. We're now at 2230856 per, for our levy rate. And so then again, more informational purposes on how a levy rate is calculated. Again, we manage the revenue side, Ada County revenue. Ada County manages the assessed value side and then mathematics determines the levy rate. This is a historical picture for you guys on what our levy rate looks like. So it's been going down every year since 2013. So it's a good, good results. I do want to remind everybody but that the 2230856 is impacted by the state's property tax relief program that the city of Meridian did opt into. Next year, the levy rate will be higher than that because we will no longer be receiving that one-time benefit for the city. We estimated that our levy rate should be in the 29 region. If we did not have that benefit from the state, it would be point 29, which is still below our current levy rate of point 3. See, our current levy rate is, hold on, I apologize. I don't have that one memorized. I apologize. So again, we're going to go from 0308 to point 29 something if we did not have the tax credit. But we're actually down to point 223 because of the property tax relief bill that we participated in. So again, that's the historical look on levy rates certified by the state. And this is, I'm going to go through these quick. These are just informational purposes. This is your new, your total taxable value as per state, as per Ada County. They're the ones who inform us what our value above the ground is for the city of Meridian. And you can see we've been growing greatly, which you guys are all familiar with. This is the new construction value. So this is where Ada County, Ada County assesses telling us, this is how much you're adding to your tax roll every single year in new construction. This does not take into consideration inflation area of factors of home prices or anything like that. This is like the new, new construction added to your tax roll. This is another value of annexation. Remember I mentioned annexation really not a big impact to us because we pretty much annexed most of the city limits. So this is just going to get smaller and smaller every year as we, you know, annex the rest of the county properties within the city limits. And then this is now going to go into the actual revenues associated to those values. So again, the base property taxes, as you can see, this year we took a reduction because we were going to be offset by the state's tax relief program. If we did not have the state's tax relief program, our revenue this year would be a little bit higher than last year. But again, we did participate. So those are the revenues for our fiscal 21 and previous years as assigned. This is your allowable property tax, taxes that we've collected over the, since 2005. Anything that has a blank represents a 0% allowable. That's that one lever that we get to pull. Those years in 11 and 12 and 21, we decided to pull the lever to zero. So that's why you show those as blank. The next one's going to be a kind of informational slide. I'm going to explain what this represents. This is what you did as a council on the lever. This is how you pulled the lever. You can see you pulled the lever 3% for a majority of the time. And 11 and 12, you said 0, 17 was 2. So you can see that accordingly. I do want to, you know, remind the council, you guys, that we have this 3% that you can see moves along this red line and the red line represents levy rate. You know, there's some interesting counterintuitive actions that you see in 2004, 5 and 6 and 7. You could see we took the 3% but the levy rate went down. In fiscal years 11 and 12, you took 0% and the levy rate went up. In, you know, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, you've always increased the levy. You always utilized the 3% but the levy rate went down. So it's counterintuitive. I just want to reiterate that our 3% lever that we pull really has hardly any impact on the overall levy rate. You know, it's such a minor number. It's $1 million out of 37 million. It has a very little impact on the overall calculation of the levy rate. The assessed value of the city of Meridian as determined by Ada County is the largest dictator of our levy rate calculation. It's not the 3% allowable by any means. It's of such a minor part in it, as you can see here. Our decisions don't dictate which way the levy rate goes because if you would have increased the 3% every single time, one would say the levy rate should go up every single time. As you can see, there's no direct correlation. It's more of a, I just wanted to share this with you that there's no direct correlation on what we determine as a 3% on the overall impact of the levy rate. It's the assessed value that has the larger determinant factor. This is our actual revenues collected from new construction. This is very important for us as a city. When we are growing at this rate as the fastest growing city in America, we have a lot of people moving here, which increases demands on all services of the city of Meridian. We have a secondary revenue source called impact fees that we collect from our development community. That development community helps pay for all the infrastructure necessary to support those new services necessary for the new growth. This new construction here represents the operating expense side of managing new growth needs on the city. So the impact fees assist with the infrastructure necessary to support the additional growth. That is a revenue source that we use. The new construction and annexation represents the operating, the personnel, the lights, the gas, the fuel, to help maintain and provide the funding to operate those infrastructure needs for the increased services that the population and development is imposing on the city. So again, these revenue sources are very important for us to be able to provide the police officers, the fire officers, the community development officers for the new growth that's coming to the city of Meridian. In annexation, very little revenue impact to the city of Meridian. Again, it's pretty minor in the grand scheme of things. But again, we do get some additional revenues for it and we provide the services to these annexation locations in the city. So those are all the independent revenue sources. When you put them all together, you can see property taxes make up the majority of where we get our revenue sources from. And then new construction is the next piece. And you can see allowable and annexation, very, very, very minor in the grand, in the total accumulation of revenues for the city of Meridian. So those are property taxes, our property tax sources, how we value, how we generate revenues, how we use our revenues. You know, we piece it into four different pie, slices of the pie. Again, we want to make sure we manage our revenues correctly so we can be sustainable long-term. Another way we look at the property tax is what we call burden. Burden is determined by who is paying the property taxes. We work with Ada County. We get their information directly from them. And what this tells us is who is paying our property taxes. And as you can see, it's mostly residential, which probably is not a surprise to you. Again, we are a heavy residential community with commercial in second place. Commercial's our second largest contributor. Again, another way to look at it is if you portion it out in 100%. This year for fiscal 20 is the highest we've ever had for residential burden. We have never been at 68.5% burden. That means more and more of the property taxes are being paid by the residential community. We do have commercial sitting at 28.3%, but you can see in some years they were up to 36%. Again, it's not too much of a surprise to you guys. I think you guys approve all the development. You know, you're approving more residential than commercial. This will continue to have a residential burden weighted on the residential side. I personally think it's a great problem. Residential values are very strong and very consistent. The commercial property is more volatile. But again, from a balancing act for development and planning, I know you need to have some more commercial. But residential is a solid revenue source for the city of Meridian because houses usually don't get up and leave. So again, it's not a bad problem to have residential homes. They generate a very consistent and static revenues collection for us. We have a collection rate of 99% of revenues of taxes, which is amazing. So we have a 1% kind of delay in collecting revenues. So we have a very sound property tax base out there, which is a great problem to have. So again, that's burden. Again, and you know, there's lots of discussions, why is commercial not paying? Or why is commercials less? Why is residential growing? Many discussions are being held at the state legislature about this. And I'm happy to discuss my opinions and thoughts at a later time with you. But again, I just wanted to introduce burden, you know, burden management for the city of Meridian on property taxes. The next item, the next few slides, again, we're going to go through these kind of faster than we have in the other slides. These are just comparatives. This is from May 2020. I don't get the new data until every May. So the next set of data won't be until May 21. But this is your general fund tax levy comparison amongst the few cities that we compare here at the city in the finance department. We track these other cities every year. For the second largest city in state of Idaho, you're the fourth lowest general fund levy rate. So congratulations to you guys. I mean, you guys are the ones that are allowing this to occur. I think it's amazing what the city does with such a low tax levy rate compared to, I mean, just look at our neighbor to the east. I mean, we're half as them. And you guys are, we're providing amazing services for half the revenue source. And farther right you go on the slide, that's even a better deal. Another way of looking at it is we only have one levy rate here at the city of Meridian. Many other agencies have up to eight levy rates. So if we took all of those levy rates into consideration, we're still the fourth. The previous slide only showed what we call the general fund comparison, which is known as, which is this slide, which is the general fund line right there. So I compare just the general fund. And then I also compare the total property tax levy rate as well. Again, so you can see many cities have multiple levy rates, whereas us, Boise, Kuna, Rexburg, we have all decided to manage ours, our levy rates with only one. No right or, you know, that's just how they all manage it. But again, just wanted to give you the data, where we get the data from and show you the graphs. If you had, if let's say Liz had a home in Meridian and a home in Caldwell and a home in Mountain Home, and let's say Liz's three homes were all 200 grand each, she would pay these taxes in each of those homes. So for her home in Mountain Home, she's paying $1,000 for that same $200, $200,000 home that she's paying 350 in Meridian. So are we a value? The answer is yes. I think we're doing amazing from a value perspective when compared to other agencies in the state of Idaho and also being the second largest city in the state of Idaho. In more informational purposes, we only represent 26.76% of your total levy rate. And there's 10 other agencies that represent 73% of the total levy rate. Do want to remind everybody that, you know, it's literally impossible for us to say that we can lower your taxes. There's not a person in the state that can ever say that because we don't manage all 11 agencies. So please be careful of saying, hey, we can lower your taxes because if someone's house goes up 30%, it's going to be nearly impossible for you to be able to say you'll lower their taxes. So again, just want to know, let, let you know that we only represent 26% of the total tax bill and that we need to manage it accordingly. Here, we're going to get some.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Todd.
Yep.
Todd, can we go back two slides?
Yep, no problem.
Maybe one more. So this one here, I'm trying to wrap my head around the comparisons that you were putting together because the one slide ahead, it looks like you've taken kind of a, all the levy rates from our current tax bill. So I'm, I guess what I'm trying to get at is where we sit total property tax payment with all the districts that a Meridian resident pays into versus other municipalities. Does that make sense?
I believe, I, it does make sense, yes.
But this slide here is the, the taxes paid comparison, but we don't necessarily have a, a complete levy rate comparison slide.
And Councilman Kavanagh, if I could also add in, that's a taxes comparison on two equally valued homes.
Right.
The average home in Meridian is not the average home in Pocatello. So it's not what they're.
You're kind of getting where I was headed, so.
Yeah. I'm happy to have a conversation about the purpose of, or the, my viewpoint on the levy conversation and its relevance, that that's separate. But this is at least comparative in some aspects.
And Luke, I'm happy to get you in. We have that data. If you would like us to present that to you. We have the total tax bill for multiple agencies that we review so that you can see where the city of Meridian resides from a total tax bill in each city. So we do track that data as well.
Great. I think maybe for a future conversation, I think it would be good to, you know, compare the, the total levy rate of a district kind of across the state. That to me is just beneficial to kind of wrap my head around. That's the one thing that at least is somewhat consistent is to, you know, what somebody's property tax payment is in Meridian versus Pocatello. That's the one thing that at least is somewhat consistent is to, you know, what somebody's property tax payment is in Meridian versus Pocatello, Mountain Home, et cetera.
Yeah, no, we have the, I have the data for you, I can easily send it out. We are, in that analysis, we are the second lowest.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll be happy to send this file out to you guys right after this meeting so you can see what people pay for their total tax bill, as you stated, Luke.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold my shooter.
Um, thank you. I guess maybe for, for you, Mayor Simison and Todd. So I feel like there's some great information here. Um, we don't often see members of the legislature attend these meetings or discuss property taxes with us. You know, we're a debt free city, we save before we spend and we're planning in ten year increments. I guess I'm curious, you know, have we ever provided this information proactively uh to members of the legislature? Are we considering that or is there a way to try to dialogue with them particularly in light of, you know, the property tax working groups proposals that seem very ill conceived in my opinion? I'm just curious if we're able to, you know, share and try to dialogue with this information.
I can.
I, I, Robert. That uh, the CFO is presenting this to council, so you all can do that as you see it in your conversations. Uh, to be honest, I don't know. This is very heavy on the levy rate and I don't know that the levy rate is always a good thing to engage the legislature on. Um, it's difficult for people to under, to, they get, they get wrapped around the levy rate when the levy rate is really not the answer or this, the problem or the solution um, in the conversation. But this is informative and we'll see where it goes from here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I, I agree. I, I just, it feels like, you know, maybe an opportune time to have that dialogue. Um, I certainly will personally uh open up those channels of communication. I guess I'd encourage council maybe to have, you know, a session or something about, about that. Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, a city that's trying to build two fire stations and a police station. And we've got some proposals that say, you know, don't do that, just issue debt. And I, and I, I feel like um it'd be great to be proactive about that. That's it.
I appreciate the questions and again, we're happy to assist with any data collection that you might need to have those conversations with legislative branch members, just reach out and let us know. So with that, the next five slides, I'm really not going to go over much. There are just, I, I provided them to you for informational purposes only. There's still more just comparisons on uh what a property tax house would look like. Um, how much they're, on average, they're paying. Again, it's just more informational purposes only for you. You know, we track six homes to see how we're doing. You know, this is just informational that, hey, we are keeping an eye on this. You know, what did the average home um price pay in city of Meridian taxes? You can see it went down nineteen or uh, see residential went down about four, uh, I apologize, wrong one. Nineteen point seven percent on that one. So again, total property taxes paid, this is what they, you know, this is what we show our, you know, six homes are doing. Um, we also track, you know, commercial properties to see how they're doing.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes, sir.
Is that total, does, does that take into account the one time change this year?
The, are you talking about the property taxes paid?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Robert, that does take in consideration the current levy rate, which is a one time uh benefit to the property taxpayer. So this does take into that consideration of the program that we participated in.
Would it be possible to show what this is without that one time? Because I think that's a more accurate reflection of where property taxes are.
It would be all projected, but we'd be happy to uh calculate that for it, but please note that it'd be projected.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I was kind of thinking along those lines as well. Um, I was hoping for this year either with, you know, the average home or, or by some metric, we could show um, what the average would have been, especially for residential owners. If there wasn't the one time uh governor's property tax relief. Just because I feel like residents are getting set up for what could be a huge change in following years. So it'd be great to wrap our heads around the quantum of that.
Liz, we'll be happy to generate that analysis for you. You're correct, next year is going to be a um eye opener when your uh tax bill comes in without that credit. You're a hundred percent correct. So again, we do the same thing for commercial, you can see commercial, um, again, they experience on average of our, of our nine properties. This is not, you know, representing every house in or commercial property in, in the city of Idaho or Meridian, just want to make that clear, that this only represents nine properties and six other residential properties. So there's only fifteen properties throughout the, the city. Again, this is just our properties that we always track. Um, residential went down nineteen percent, commercial went down twenty five percent uh in the same comparatives. Um, there's a commercial and then just want to remind everybody that property tax makes up a majority of our revenue sources at sixty percent. Uh, ever intergovernmental is our second largest at fifteen. So of the seventy five percent of your revenue sources that you as council uh is responsible for, you have one lever, that's three percent. Everything else is managed by the state, the county or somebody else. We have one little lever out of seventy five percent of your revenue sources. We need to make sure we manage that the best we can. Um, the other revenue sources are under our purview, but again, that only represents twenty five percent. So again, just want to remind everyone that's seventy five percent is our majority of our revenue sources. And we always want to make sure we manage it accordingly.
Todd?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, didn't need to interrupt Mr. Mayor, if I may.
My Cavanagh.
You're good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Todd, I assume that the, the revenue, the dollars that came from the state this year, that's covered under the other general revenue at that three percent?
Uh, no, it'd be in our property, we threw it in there, in our property tax.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep, no. Thank you for the question. So again, that's the presentation today, that's property tax one oh one. I just wanted to really allow you guys opportunity to dialogue and ask questions about how property taxes work. Um, it's not intuitive all the time. Um, just want to allow you guys to ask questions and again, next property, you know, these are the things that we covered today. Um, next meeting that we will present to you will be in a um non-presentation format. I'll just deliver the answers and results to you most likely. We'll give you the results of twenty twenty, how did we do budget versus actual? Uh, changes to fund balance, we add to the fund balance, did it decrease to the fund balance? We'll let you know what our top revenue sources are, which you got a glimpse of, which is going to be property taxes and intergovernmental. And then we'll let you know what our top five expenses are for the fiscal year twenty twenty. Again, um, with that, stand or sit for questions and I'm happy to dialogue or obtain any other information that you wish to have. Uh, because we think it's timely that we get involved like Liz stated about property taxes because legislatures will be, legislation will be um put to the floor. And I think if we can be involved, uh, let them know our voices. I think that's very important, kind of like what Liz was talking about. And I'm happy to be a resource for you guys if needed.
Council on any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Todd, uh, to, to Councilor Schrader's comments, you know, we heard last week from some of our friends in the legislature talk at great lengths about their encouraging of municipalities to look at, at bonding for, for capital projects.
Yep.
This is, you know, a hundred eighty degrees to kind of the philosophical view of previous mayors and councils. I'm just curious, as our CFO, is there a financial argument to be made for supporting the suggestions that are coming from the state house? Um, should we be looking at deviating kind of the model that we followed? Um, and if so, what positive impact does that have on, on property tax bills?
For, a few questions there, I'll see what I can do on answering them all. Um, do I believe taking debt is a good thing for our taxpayers? I would say no, because that only adds interest to the value. So I don't see how you can save money by adding interest to a debt situation. Don't get me wrong, the debt numbers, lending numbers are amazing right now. So if you're going to take on debt, this is the time you want to do so. But in five years, seven years, what if it's up to seven percent? You know, then now the state legislature just put all the agencies in a really tough bind. Now we're going to be borrowing at seven percent, which is a increase to the property taxpayers at the end of the day. So yeah, right now it might look great to take on debt because the rates are amazing. Ten years, no one knows. That could be, uh, you know, changing quickly. I think back in the eighties and nineties is what seventeen percent to borrow? So again, do I think debt is great? Yeah, only when the rates are great, but not for a long-term situation. I don't think um, uh, it would help the taxpayers at all to answer your question, Luke. I think it's an increase to our taxpayers. Can we fiscally manage our fist, uh, finances correctly? I think the city of Meridian is an example of yes, you can. We have done it successfully as one of the fastest growing cities. I think we can be a loud voice in that discussion that, hey, we are an example of yes, you can make this happen if you properly plan and be involved with long-term planning and get your uh revenues in the correct place. Um, can we do it? Ninety nine percent of the agencies in America are debt. They, that's how they finance all their construction. Um, we are, we're the outlier, there's no doubt about it. Is it a good thing? I think it's a great thing, I think it saves the taxpayers. Um, the legislation representatives we're talking about, well, the burden is being put on the current homeowners and not the future homeowners. And that's what bond does. Bonding puts the cost burden on the people who are going to use it because the future people are paying for the construction of the particular asset. True statement, I cannot argue against that. But that's a short window of view. If you look at it over the next hundred years, all property taxpayers are going to pay some proportionate share of the city of Meridian's infrastructure at some point in time if they all sit here. So again, in that small window, yes, the, the, the people in the future will pay for the infrastructure that they're paying for. But if they, but if you look at the long term, the way we do it is you pay, you save as you go. Yet the current people are paying for the future people. But when the future people get here, they'll be paying for the future people in the next cycle. So again, over a hundred years, it probably breaks out even. But we just happen to segment our revenues uh requests from this particular customer group rather than this customer group. So again, who's right, who's wrong in this? That's going to be the philosophical debate, but we believe the current city of Meridian property taxpayers are going to pay their infrastructure portion over the long term of the city's growth, not just the small twenty year bond window. And that's how my philosophy is, not to say it's right or wrong, but that's my philosophy is over time, all city taxpayers will pay some proportionate share of the growth of the city of Meridian.
Councilman Cavanagh, just to put a number to it, what I traditionally heard from the school district is a, a bond has a fifty percent cost increase to the asset. So really the question would be is how long does it take you to save that asset versus increasing construction costs versus the fifty percent increase if you were to do it immediately? That's generally speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Lavoy, appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you, Luke.
You guys do a great job.
Council on any additional questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Council on Pro.
Todd, would you mind taking us through, there's, there's um, you know, there's when a property gets assessed and then when the city actually sees the funds come from the county. And so if you, let's say you have a new construction that happens in January of this year, that is not uh added to the county tax rolls until early two twenty twenty one. And then you get that information by June of twenty twenty one. And then that is included in the expected revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two?
Twenty two.
Twenty two.
Yeah, so we're about twelve, eighteen months in arrears.
Okay, so that, so let's say that there was construction that was built January of twenty twenty, we are not seeing that, those actual funds from the county till twenty twenty two collected from the, from the property owner and sent to the county, sent to the city.
So if you build something right now, is your example?
No, I'm talking about if it's, let's say, early in the year.
Okay, yeah, we won't get that until fiscal, until eighteen months later, correct?
Okay.
Yep, you got that correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm just a comment. Um, I just want to thank you, Todd, and especially the previous city councils and mayors that came before us, right? Um, right now, everyone's talking more money today. I feel like I hear that all the time, doesn't matter what party it is. And I just appreciate the fact that we've saved before we've spent, that we've been so thoughtful over the long term. And um, I just wanted to state my support for how we have, how we have banished our finances historically. Um, and I, I appreciate you presenting this and hope that in the future, we'll be able to model the impact of some of these proposals if they feel like they're getting traction. Uh, so people can understand exactly what that would mean for them. Thank you, Todd.
I appreciate, I echo your words to the previous council members, they're the ones who have put us in this successful position. This then, we didn't get here by chance. Uh, there's been a lot of blood, sweat and tears over the last thirty, forty years to manage the city's growth to where it's at. And I agree with you, Liz, a lot of kudos to those previous council members and decision makers.
Councilman Holton. Yes, and I concur with the Councilwoman Schrader's comments. And, and I think Todd said something very important, and that is uh to live within our means. So we can uh maintain the level of services and, and we work hard to uh meet the needs as they arise with the growth. And I think we're doing a good job with that. And, and to that comment about, you know, we should, we should borrow and bond to uh, you know, put it on future, future residents, if you will. And, and with the, the level of our federal debt, the way it is right now, which is, I think, unconscionable, I don't think we should be adding a local debt on top of what my children, grandchildren and their children will be paying for, for many, many, many years to come. So I, I prefer our current method of doing things. And hopefully with our legislators, we can work out uh something that uh, that's a solution that uh works, works for everybody. So thank you for that presentation, Todd, very helpful.
Appreciate that, Brad, and I agree with you. Hopefully legislation can help the school districts and other districts realize that they have other revenue tools called impact fees that can really aid in the management of growth. And that's where Meridian has been quite successful. We tapped into that revenue source years ago so that parks, fire and police can uh build infrastructure to meet the needs of the growth. And that's where we have been successful. I think last year you probably saw NAPA increase their rates by nine hundred percent. You know, that was just a decision that uh unfortunately they did not maximize that revenue opportunity like we did. And they are seeing some of the negative impacts with that where our previous decision makers, Brad included, has set the city up with a, a successful impact fee model. And that is something that we heavily rely on because development should pay for their fair share.
Okay, council, any further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lavoy.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is I am not in executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we go into executive session for Idaho code seven four dash two zero six A one A.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Motion second to adjourn executive session. Any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Holton.
Aye.
All eyes must carry, so we adjourned executive session.
Destiny, if you can hear me, this is Chris at City Hall. When the meeting begins, I will bring you into the meeting as a panelist so you can turn your camera on if you wish. And the mayor will give you an opportunity to speak if you wish at that point too. But congratulations and thanks for joining us. Cody, I'll do the same for you when we get to your hearing.
Councilman Cavanagh, are you there?
I am.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion second to come out of executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton, move to adjourn.
Second motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? You guys have it, and we are adjourned. Counsel, I will call this meeting to order for the record, it is November 24th at 6:06 PM. We will begin tonight's meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh. Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you all join me in standing, Pledge of Allegiance. Our next item is, it looks like we do not have anyone for the committee invocation this evening?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we will move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move the adoption of the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
I have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda is agreed to. No one signed up under public forum this evening?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to the first item, resolution. Resolution number 2243, which is an appointment of Destiny Hart to Historic Preservation Commission. Counsel, I was once again joined by the illustrious Chair of our Historic Preservation Commission, and we sat down and we interviewed Destiny for this position on HPC. Destiny brings a wealth of knowledge, especially in a very unique area of grant writing, which is can always be helpful in our commissions. And I think grant writing is just one aspect of, you know, people that are detail oriented and can really help in HPC sometimes. Looking at, you know, applications, whether for, you know, historical purposes or grants or otherwise. But she is interested, she's got a long history of service in the community, and I'd love to her consideration for appointments to HPC. Councilman Hoagland.
Be happy to make the motion if Councilwoman Perrow does not.
Yes, go ahead, sorry, my voice is a bit rough tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I would move that we approve resolution number 20-2243, appointing Destiny Hart to seat one of the Meridian Historic Preservation Commission.
Second motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion second to approve resolution number 2243, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and I do see that we have Destiny on the call with us. Destiny, we'd love if you would like to make any comments, we can unmute you to make any comments, or if you can unmute yourself, actually. Well, I don't know if she's going to be able to do that, so if she does unmute, we can stop any of our next comments. But we just want to say welcome to her and appreciate her service to HPC. Awesome. So with that, we will move on to our public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. First item is consideration of approval and since the Meridian certain real property. I'm going to open this public hearing and turn this over to Mr. Raddick.
Mayor Simison, council members, can everybody hear me? Okay, this is an item that you've seen before on the October 27th agenda. Council resolved to declare our intent to dispose of this well lot. We are now moving through the stage of the checkboxes we have to go through to properly dispose of it according to law. After this public hearing, assuming a council votes to approve the item, the next step will be publication of the disposition ordinance on December 4th. After that, we'll be able to go ahead with public auction to dispose of the well lot. If you may or may not recall, in the October 27th council memo, this is a well that we inherited when we annexed Meridian Heights and Tuckey Ridge. The well was never of the quality that we could use to serve customers because of the water quality. The well produced water that was over the maximum contaminant level for uranium. We did have to keep the well in service for a while as a backup for fire flow. But since then, the city's been able to connect up to the system, to the city system sufficiently, so the well is no longer needed. The well has since been abandoned to protect source water quality, and now we are ready to dispose of the well lot. We have no further use for it, we have other wells in the area, and we have accounted for our future needs in the area. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Kyle, council, any questions at this time? This is a public hearing, Mr. Corrick, do we have anyone set up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up.
Okay, is there anybody in the room that would like to come forward and testify on this item, or anybody who's on the Zoom call? Just use the raise your hand function at the bottom, and we can bring you in to speak. Seeing nobody in either fashion wishing to testify, Kyle, any last comments?
Mayor Simison, no.
Okay, then do I have a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, just for process understanding, our only action today is just to close the public hearing, correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is a resolution that's part of your packet, that that resolution can, needs to be approved, and then bring back an ordinance to carry out the sale part. This just sets the minimum price.
Okay, let me track with that, I don't know if anyone's got a copy of the resolution in front of them. I don't.
Mr. Mayor.
Resolution of the ordinance under.
The ordinance will come back, I think Kyle said it already, next week?
The ordinance is on six.
It is already on there, oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Is there a resolution still?
Yes, we still do need to do the resolution, too.
Okay, and where were the resolution, do you say you want to have the resolution number?
20-2238. Oh, I apologize, that was on there because you've already done that, Kyle said that, I missed that, I apologize. The resolution had done, it's just the ordinance that's on your packet for approval.
So.
Mr. Mayor.
Close the public hearing, which you've, I've had a motion a second to do.
I don't think we have the motion yet, but I'm happy to make one, that we closed the public hearing.
In a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Second motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion second, is there discussion, Councilman Strater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could have my properties mixed up, but I was curious if Kyle wouldn't mind reaching out to the Meridian Heights subdivision. I recall residents there saying that their kids like to play on this lot, and if you wouldn't mind contacting their HOA or their group to see if they're interested. I would love for them to be involved if they have a way to make this into a little neighborhood park or something.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, we actually have identified that resident who spoke up at that meeting. And through our notification strategy, we'll be able to notify them. Unfortunately, Meridian Heights does not have an HOA, so we can't work through an HOA. But we will, our intent is to sign the property and to send out notifications to a radius, and that radius will at least cover that resident that you're speaking of.
Thank you.
Motion second, close of public hearings, there further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it, and the motion is agreed to, and the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, Kyle.
Pardon me?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item up, number three on the agenda is a public hearing for Paramount Point, H 2020-0098. I will open the staff hearing, or this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me tonight, yet again. So, as stated, this first item before you tonight is for Paramount MDA, is a request to do a development agreement modification on a site that we previously discussed. And a city council approved a short plot on in September of 2020 under the application H-2020-0082, also called Paramount Point Short Plot. The applicant proposes to amend the fourth addendum of the existing Paramount Development Agreement to incorporate a new concept plan as required. The existing DA provision was identified during the review of the Paramount Point Short Plot application that was approved in September. The subject DA requires a modification to include a conceptual development plan prior to submission of a certificate of zoning compliance application or issuance of any building permits. Staff notes that unfortunately, there have been two certificates of zoning compliance already approved on this site prior to staff realizing that this DA provision needed to be adhered to. It was included an urgent care facility and a bank. The applicant has submitted a, this is the short plot, by the way. The applicant has submitted a new concept plan that matches the approved short plot and depicts four commercial building lots and two common lots with a public road bisecting the subject site for connectivity to the west through the Linder Village project. In addition, the urgent care facility that was approved in 2019 is no longer under the same ownership as the rest of the subject parcels, but is part of the amended development agreement. It makes up the fifth lot on the concept plan noted as not a part on this, on the short plot.
Yep.
And is in the northeast corner of this site here. The new concept plan also depicts a right-in, right-out connection to North Fox Runway, which is the north-south road here, Collector Road. That driveway access is in alignment with the driveway access across. That driveway access is in alignment with the driveway access across Fox Runway for the assisted living facility. Staff believes the new concept plan is consistent with the requirements of the addendum and therefore staff recommends approval of the DA mod with the recommended changes in the staff report. After that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you, Joe. I think I gave you a heads up about this question, but I recall when this was presented to us, we had asked for some follow-up about whether there is going to be a crosswalk here, just given the amount of traffic heading into this development and if there's been any update on that.
Councilwoman Schrader, members of the council. I have not been told specifically, other than from the previous meeting, that there is intended to be a crosswalk at North Fox Runway. The applicant is on the call tonight and plans to present, so they might have a more update, a more substantial update than I can give you.
Super.
Council, you have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, I'll turn this over to the applicant. Cody, you are recognized for 15 minutes. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Cody. Cody Zaffer, I am at twenty, sorry. Twenty-nine, twenty-nine North Navigator Drive, Meridian. I appreciate the opportunity to come present to you guys today. We are in agreement with everything that's in the staff report and we've been working very closely with the developers over at Linder Village to make sure that everything is pedestrian-friendly. And we've had some comments about lighting and signage and things of that nature. We've tried to incorporate every comment that comes our way to make sure that everybody is, what's the word, pleased with what we're presenting, that they don't mind living next to it. We want to make sure everybody appreciates it and we are ready to carry forward with it, with your approval.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you very much, Cody, for presenting today. I, I guess, could you elaborate a little bit more? I remember when Mr. Wardle presented this project originally, that we had had some discussions specifically about whether it was going to be a crosswalk here. And I guess I'd just like some more detail on where that stands and how we're going to make sure that that happens and, and get to a good outcome for the neighbors.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, thanks for that question. I believe that along with the crosswalk along Fox Runway that Joe pointed out, they're also planning on working with Linda Village to put a crosswalk on the, the new street as well, just to make sure that there's enough space there. There's really plenty of lighting, plenty of landscaping, make sure it's a pedestrian-friendly and safe way to travel from the neighborhoods to the Linder Village and any businesses that end up in the Paramount Point commercial subdivision.
Great, thanks.
Council, any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Mr. Corr, do we have anyone sign up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we had nobody sign up to testify in advance.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to provide testimony on this item or anybody on the Zoom call? If you can indicate by the, using the raise your hand function at the bottom, or star nine?
I believe it's star nine.
Star nine, if you're on the telephone. Says we do have someone on the phone. Anybody who would like to provide testimony on this item? The applicant like to make any final comments?
Just that we agree with the staff report and we really appreciate this chance to work with you again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, I'll turn this over to you. Councilman Hogland.
I move that we close the public hearing for H 2020 dash zero zero nine eight.
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion carries and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Now that we have Councilwoman Schrader's crosswalk in, in play, I would move that after considering all staff and applicant testimony, I move to approve file number H 2020 zero zero nine eight as presented in the staff report for November 24th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Corr, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Burrow.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Best of luck continuing on the project. Next item is a public hearing for H 2020 dash zero zero six zero. I will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, please bear with me on this, as I might bounce around a little bit between the plat that was previously reviewed and the latest plat. The applications before you are for Horse Meadow subdivision with a request for a rezone from the existing R4 zoning district to the R8 zoning district and a preliminary plat consisting of 26 single-family residential lots and four common lots on 4.71 acres of land. The gross density of the project is 5.52 dwellings per acre, which is in the middle of the allowed density for the future land use designation of medium-density residential, which allows three to eight dwellings per acre. The average lot size within the development is around 4,100 square feet. The minimum lot size in the requested R8 zone is 4,000 square feet. Because the lots are so close to the minimum lot size and the look of the submitted elevations, staff was concerned with the proposed homes being able to fit on the lots. And so staff requested the applicant provide an exhibit showing how these will occur. The applicant provided this exhibit for the previous layout. Its applicability should still stand despite the changes to the plat. That is this exhibit here. And again, this plat has been revised, so don't hang on to it too tightly. Because the subject site is less than five acres in size, the UDC minimum requirement of 10% qualified open space and at least one-site amenity are not required to be met. However, the applicant is requesting a rezone to a zoning district that allows higher density than the previous R4 zoning district, the existing. Therefore, staff finds it appropriate that usable open space and an amenity be provided. In response, the applicant proposed approximately 35,000 square feet of open space, or roughly 17% with the previous plat. And with the revised plat, has proposed approximately 8,000 more square feet of open space, which now is approximately 21%. This open space consists mostly of the street buffers along the outside of the development, but also includes a central common lot that is almost 8,000 square feet in the new revised plat. Access into this development is proposed via a new local street connection to Pine Avenue. All internal local streets within the proposed development are shown as 33-foot-wide street sections with five-foot attached sidewalks. This street section will accommodate on-street parking where no driveways exist. Originally, access was proposed to Black Cat by way of converting West Quarter Horse Lane to a new public street. However, ACHD denied this access because the adjacent Pine Avenue is a lesser classified street than Black Cat. Collector versus arterial. Therefore, access must be taken from Pine. West Quarter Horse Lane is currently an ingress, egress easement, access easement with four surveying sites, including the subject site. Without the consent of all easement holders, the access to Black Cat must remain. At the commission meeting, staff recommended the easement area remain as a non-buildable lot until such time it can be included as part of a future development. At the commission meeting, the commission did recommend approval with some requested changes as outlined below. The key issues of discussion by commission were how Quarter Horse Lane, the easement area, was intended to function both in the near future and in the years to come. Specifically, how much of it will be green space and how much is expected to be right-of-way for the other easement holders to the east and southeast. In addition, they discussed the size of the lots in relation to the submitted concept elevations and concern over whether those homes can actually be built on the proposed lots. And finally, the location and amount of open space that was proposed and how will the different locations be accessed by residents. Because of these issues, commission recommended that a condition requiring fencing along the north boundary of the open space lot in the northeast corner, where the tot lot was previously proposed, would be added for safety. They also recommended that the applicant revise the plat to reconfigure the lots in this corner, nine and 11. Around the northeast corner, open space lot to increase its overall size. They also wanted to add a condition to work with staff on providing fencing within the easement area if it were to remain as partial open space and partial ingress-egress. They also recommended revising the plat to remove a lot along Black Cat Road to widen those lots. And then finally, to provide some sample elevations that will fit on the proposed lots. There's a little bit to unpack there, but prior to diving more into the new plat, the outstanding issues for city council are the following. The applicant did not submit different elevations based on the commission's recommendations because it has been stated that the submitted, submitted elevations with the application are intended to be constructed in the development and should fit on the lots. In addition, the revised plat now shows the private lane easement as a common lot and dedicated right-of-way. If council supports the revised plan, staff does recommend a new DA provision, or I should say, recommend to revise DA provision 1.1 and be modified to read as follows. "A final plat application shall not be submitted until the applicant receives approval and provides documentation from all easement holders to relinquish their rights to the existing access easement once the public road connection to Pine Avenue is constructed." In addition, we recommend that council strike condition of approval 2C as this coincides with the modified DA provision above. In addition, we, I recommend that council include a new condition of approval to construct a five-foot-wide micro path along the south side of Lot 7 Block 1, which is this here. Sorry, along, in Lot 8, but along the south border of Lot 7 Block 1 that connects to the sidewalk along the internal street and to the sidewalk along Black Cat. As noted, following the commission hearing, the applicant revised the plat in response to the commission's recommendations and also incorporated other changes that have not yet been fully analyzed by staff. The applicant has provided a comprehensive narrative of, of the proposed changes and I have also provided a summary of the proposed changes for council's consideration. Staff has also outlined some of the outstanding issues, as noted above, and recommended changes or inclusion of new conditions. The three main changes in the revised plat versus the plat heard by the commission, the open space is no longer located in the northeast corner and is now in a more central location within the subdivision. This has also allowed the applicant to increase the overall open space from, in, to include approximately 8,000 more square feet and totals nearly an acre overall for this site. In addition, for the recommendation of the commission, one lot was removed from the west boundary, from the lots along Black Cat. Most notable, the applicant is now proposing to construct the common open space and a public street over the area of the subject site that contains the existing ingress and egress easement. Conveyance of this right-of-way to ACHD is contingent upon all easement holders relinquishing their rights to the use of said easement. The applicant's attorney is working with the three other landowners on a resolution, but no such relinquishment has been obtained at this time. There has been no written testimony since the commission hearing, and so after that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I do have one to that very last point. You spoke to Joe and I don't know if it's a question for you or Mr. Nary, but you know, they are working on that resolution for that ingress-egress and, and getting, making agreement on that. It hasn't been obtained at this time. There's a, do, do we make, if this moves forward and we find agreement on everything, is there to be a condition in there that that has to be resolved before this can move forward? And how do we do that, Mr. Nary?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Hogland, I think Joe has a condition like that. So it is required that they can't bring it back or a final plat without that route done. So it won't come back. If, if they can't get it done, then they can't flat this project and build it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, yes. So that was the DA provision 1E that creates, allows that to move forward with that process working itself out.
Councilman Hogland, members of the council, that is correct, yes. That's why I noted that DA provision, that they, they have the, the life of the preliminary plat to do that and get those things recorded. So there's, again, it incentivizes them to get it done. Otherwise, this plat will not be able to work and then they'll have to come back and get some other kind of plat approval.
Thank you.
Councilman Perrow.
Joe, please forgive my voice tonight. Couple of questions for you. First, what's the distance between Black Cat Road and the entrance to the first street there, coming south into the subdivision? My concern is that, it's my understanding that, that Pine Avenue is intended to be connected through to 10 Mile, that a lot of the right-of-way either has been obtained or at least been verbally committed to ACHD to do that, but there's not funding for it at this time, but there's an anticipation it will connect. So then Pine Avenue is going to be a fully developed street. I just have a lot of concern that that entrance is really close to the Black Cat and Pine intersection. And to be candid, I live in the subdivision directly to the east of this. And there are people that are heading north on Black Cat, making a right onto Pine Avenue that, that fly through that intersection. And it would be very easy for, for somebody to not recognize a vehicle turning left onto Pine. So, so what, what would, is the distance between the intersection and this entrance into the subdivision sufficient if Pine Avenue gets fully built out?
Councilman Perrow, members of the council, that's a great questions. First, to the point of Pine Avenue punching through, I will be the planner on the two projects that will do that and that will be constructed by those applicants and those developers. So there is a plan and intention to connect Pine all the way through from Black Cat to 10 Mile. Secondly, this lines up with the north, I can't say that word, I'm going to butcher it, Tricquire Street on the north side of Pine Avenue. And that was per ACHD's request. Again, the applicant originally did not propose this connection to Pine and neither did staff. ACHD is requiring this connection because it lines up with the street on the north side of Pine Avenue. From what I'm seeing, it looks to be probably approximately 100 feet from the near edge of Black Cat, give or take, you know, 10 feet or so. So I understand your concerns. Staff had these same concerns when we originally reviewed the plat, which this is closer to some of those original plans. But this is per ACHD's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Councilman Perrow.
Joe, did, do you know, other than it lighting up, did they give any other reason? Because the, the street directly to the north of that is just a cul-de-sac. There's maybe seven houses on it at the most. It doesn't go anywhere. So I'm not understanding why it lining up is, and, and it won't go anywhere because there's a canal on the other side. There's a canal to the north of the, of the homes. So did they give any other reasoning beside that? I just, this is a, I'd much rather see the entrance come through where the, where the cul-de-sac is, just head straight north from there and then put the cul-de-sac in where this first entrance is. It just seems a lot, like it makes a lot more sense to do that from a safety standpoint.
Councilwoman Pro, members of the council, I professionally, I agree with you, but that ACHD did not, and from what I remember, reading the staff report, did not give any more reason other than that. I'm not sure if they're very flexible on that, but that could be something to discuss. It could be an additional condition, I guess, to evaluate whether or not that access should be switched.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you, Joe. You know, I, I noticed that in your staff report, the comment that the revised plat hasn't been fully analyzed by staff. that the revised plat hasn't been fully analyzed by staff. I'd hate to hear that, especially if you're jammed and more time is needed for something, I guess. Are the changes material in nature? Like, do you feel like further time might lead you to different conclusions? Can you just give me a feel for that comment and how material it is? And sort of the the timing that you think is necessary on your end?
Councilman Schrader, council. Great question. The when I say that I didn't fully analyze it, it I guess it's the partial truth. This, as I noted, is more in line with one of the original plans that we worked through and more in line with what staff had recommended before. This is probably the seventh iteration of this plat that I have looked at. And the main point of me saying that it hasn't been fully analyzed is the analysis in my staff report is not reflect does not reflect this plat. It reflects the previous plat. However, the general consensus and general needs of the city, I think, are still being met with this plat. The only issue is that this right of way in the southern end of the site cannot be built as shown until all of those easement holders relinquish their rights, which with my recommended DA provision that will hold this applicant to making that happen. Otherwise, this plat will expire.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you, Joe. I in no way was trying to imply that you hadn't done some analysis. I assumed that because of the workload and changes that it had just been a challenge. So do you feel comfortable that it makes sense to make a decision this evening? Or do you feel additional time would benefit the council to fall, you know, to follow up with ACHD and can do the completion of your staff report? Or do you think that those details in the staff report are relatively immaterial versus the whole concept matching originally what you analyzed?
Councilman Schrader. I honestly think that this could be handled tonight. I a lot of the issues presented in the staff report are frankly answered by this plat. And the biggest one being what is going to happen to the easement. I have, as you noted, quite a bit of work, so continuing this out only hurts me there. But beyond that, again, the analysis in there has kind of been responded to by this plat and from the applicant. So if we can handle the easement area, and again, we're not going to get to final plat without that being figured out, then I think tonight is a good night for this.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Joe, don't mean to put you on the spot, but your point about there, there's been a lot of plats on this particular piece land. Can you give us council kind of a range of of the amount of lots that have been proposed on here? What's the low point? And I think probably the previous iteration was at its highest point before they reduced, but can you give us that range offhand?
Councilman Cavanagh, yes, sir. I believe the original original was 30 lots. It's been reduced kind of consistently since then. We had 29 and 28. Now we're down to 26. This is the low point from my understanding and my memory. So we are getting lower. At commission, I did find out that the our four lots and that plat that expired had 14. So
Team, that was my okay, thank you.
That was from 2006, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Council, any further questions for staff at this point? Then I will go ahead and ask the applicant to come forward and state your name and address for the record and be recognized for 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I take this off? It's so hard to hear me. Thank you. For the record, Penelope Constantikes, Post Office Box 405 Boise, Idaho 83701. I would like to just say briefly that I appreciate the professionalism that Joe has exhibited and I've actually really appreciated working with him. It's been a long path that we've traveled and he's been great to work with. So with that, Joe's already told you about what we're applying for our eight. We have 26 buildable lots and three and common lots for street buffer, open space, utility lines outside of the right of way to connect to sewer and water at the Public Works preferred locations. The only thing that I could think of when I spoke with Joe about the new plat was any questions that Public Works may have about the new plat. We're still looping the water and and we're connecting to sewer at the location that Public Works wanted us to connect to. So with that, I have discovered that infill development is probably the most challenging of all of them. And in this instance, it's not because we had an engineering problem or water table problem or an irrigation facility to deal with. But we were searching for ways to to meet all the various sets of standards from all the controlling agencies. The number of iterations that we've gone through, I think, is a marker for the for the applicant's willingness to keep refining until we found the sweet spot. And I think we've gotten there. As was stated, the plat before you this evening reflects planning and zoning mission recommendations along with compliance with Meridian standards and ACHD's policies. Didn't want to just take a short aside here and talk about the connection to Pine Avenue. I have two comments on that. I think our second plat, we propose to put our local street connection to Pine Avenue as far east as possible. I think we were one lot west of the eastern boundary. And that's from my old days of working at ACHD. And I felt that the safety factor in doing that would would be best. But we were overridden by the highway district. So we've located it where they've stipulated. The other thing is that I worked on the final plat for Creekstone, which is at the northwest corner of the Ten Mile Creek and Pine Avenue. And the applicant, in that instance, trusted bridge money with ACHD as did Chesterfield across the road. So they have two. They have half half of the bridge money now. And if there are new developments coming online, which I was not aware of, then Pine Avenue is will shortly be connected. And that's good because that gives people in that neighborhood a direct path to get to downtown. I outlined, I submitted a memo yesterday and I outlined the P and Z recommendations that we brought online. And that included centralizing the open space in the center of the subdivision. And we have a very high percentage of open space now. We reduced the number of lots along Black Cat Road. We've widened those lots. And the final item that I discussed in that memo was finding a more permanent disposition for the easement area that runs across the south portion of the site. We did get our tree mitigation information and and fencing along the open space or the easement area will not likely be needed because we fully intend to construct a public road in that area. So I wanted to do just a kind of a regional view and bring it into play the three easement holders. So the image before you right now is the first one, they're south and a little southwest of us. They do have a flag that connects them to Black Cat Road, but there is an easement facility in that 30 feet. Plus, it's very close to railroad tracks and you have some sight distance issues there. So it would serve potentially one residence, but it couldn't possibly serve more than one as it's as it is right now. The the second image is the parcel that's directly to the east of us. They do have access to Pine Avenue. But it's a substandard bridge and and it's not capable of handling heavy equipment such as fire equipment. So they use quarter horse lane also for their access. And the third location is down in the corner. You'll see that there is a stub street that was provided with Chesterfield. I don't know the particulars about whether or not Mr. Casey could actually use that as an access point. I suspect not until the parcel is developed and he reports to us that he'll be put in a pine box in that property and he has no intention of leaving. Although he does have children that will probably want to redevelop the parcel. The final image on this set is an image I took from the tract books that Ada County Assessor provides on their website. And it shows the easement area as it stretches from Black Cat Road over to Chesterfield. It does hinge just past the first parcel on the on the south. That particular property owner is not a party to the easement. So the remainder of the way it transitions down and just like a public road, it straddles the property lines. So there's 25 feet on each side of that of that 25 feet is on each of the adjacent properties. So that just by way of of explanation. I think this is important because of several items. First of all, the the first parcel you looked at, the one with the flag, they are essentially landlocked. They have no access except through the easement. And it does establish a western half of the public local public road network that staff talked to us about way in the beginning. So it adds a local network that moves traffic between these areas without going out onto pine or Black Cat Road. The applicant is proposing to extend sewer and water and pressurize irrigation in the public road that we're proposing to build all the way to the east property line, which is another element of the of the regional benefit of what we're proposing because it's far better to put those services in now than it is to retrofit with a road or sewer and water services in the future. So and they're doing that at their own volition and they don't expect any reimbursement in the future for doing that. It's just a way to be a good neighbor and to get things done the right way at the beginning. Just seems better to lay that groundwork. So that's what we're doing. I've already talked about the offset. And I agree, I had a little bit of heartburn about that local street being so close to Black Cat. But we we don't have any control over that essentially. So with regard to the easements, we are working with a professional land development, land real estate attorney. We went shopping and found one that was fully dialed in on how to navigate these kinds of things. And what we're looking at doing is is an easement modification. Because the easement will continue to function east of our property line. This modification will convert their easement access rights and turn it into public road access, basically. So that the modification to the easement only affects the easement on the subject site and nowhere else. It'll continue to function east of our property line. So that's where we are. We've had multiple discussions with all three of them. And the next item for us to do is to meet with them with the actual easement modification agreement. So and I've spoke with Mr. Morgan yesterday. And we stayed in close contact with them. And will continue to do so because it's the applicant's intent to navigate that easement modification and build a public road in that location. As for the elevations, the anticipated home builder for the site is an experienced builder and they currently work in the Treasure Valley. And I took a look, a closer look at the elevations that we provided and and these are the ones that I submitted with the previous memo. And it they do, they're to scale and they do show with the green circles how the elevations incorporate the side yard setbacks. And I don't know if Joe can get to those very easily. I do have pictures here. If that's the least bit helpful. Somewhere I can hold them up? No. Okay. So I did look at those real closely to make sure that what we had actually set those on the lots and I it appears that we've done so. Let's see. And we have quite a variety of lot sizes. The lot sizes along Black Cat Road now are at 48 feet. And I did some preliminary mathematics on that. Our lot sizes along Black Cat Road increased by over 500 square feet. So we felt good that that we had come into line with what the Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned about. For Public Works, we will be connecting to both Black Cat Road and Pine Avenue. So the water service will be looped. And we're extending the lines not just for our subdivision through the green area that's in the bottom left hand corner of that plat. That'll be an easement area for sewer and water and it'll be combined with open space. We just won't be able to have trees anywhere near the lines. And and where was I? I was somewhere. So those lines will be sized appropriately for any future development that occurs in the vicinity. And the project engineer appreciates working with Warren, as do we all. And I'm sure that whatever Warren needs, he will be given as a function of designing the instruction drawings for the subdivision. So kind of in conclusion, Horse Meadows does add residences to the load of fire and police. But I would stipulate that it's already in an area that they serve. This is not like we're going into the outskirts of Meridian and adding additional area, which expands their service area geographically as well as the number of residences. It utilizes land that's already in the developed portion of Meridian that's near schools, services, retail and higher classification roads. I've already mentioned the Pine Avenue crossing at Ten Mile Creek and that there's road trust money already sitting at ACHD ready to be put to work to build a bridge across that creek. I do appreciate the time that you spend, Mayor and Council and coming, and I especially appreciate the opportunity to stand before you this evening. Rather than go on about things that you don't need to know about or aren't interested in, I'd like to just be available to answer any questions or go into any detail that you would like me to go into.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. Penelope, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name.
That's fine. You can call Ms. Riley too.
So because I have seen firsthand the I've seen firsthand the traffic concerns getting out on to have dealt with it myself, but seen firsthand the traffic concerns getting out on to Black Hat from Pine. Most especially when the school to the south is getting in and leaving. And I want to revisit this conversation about the entrance to the subdivision and you had mentioned, excuse me, you had mentioned that there wasn't anything that can be done. It was ACHD's determination that that's where the entrance would go. In in the conversations that you had with him, was this was this a specific discussion? Or was it just that ACHD required this and there was no further conversation about how close this was to Black Hat who event that will eventually be a five lane? Can you give me more detail about how that conversation with ACHD went? Because I just 100 feet is not very far and I just think there's going to be some significant traffic problems.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, it wasn't just a staff report that was issued. I advocated for moving that access point over to the east. And we did have numerous, we had, we had meetings here with ACHD in attendance and I've had several Zoom meetings with Stacy Yarrington, who is our Development Services Planner. Later conversations had more to do with the new public road in the easement area and relinquishment of easements, but we just didn't, we didn't get any traction on that. So I we'd be, we can, we can easily flip the layout of the subdivision to shift that street over. And I don't anticipate that the applicant would have any problem doing that. It's not something that I can do unilaterally. I'd have to have a I mean, it wouldn't just, I couldn't do it, but we would be happy to accommodate that if it's possible.
Mr. Mayor, a follow up.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you very much. By if it's possible, does that mean
By if it's possible, does that mean the applicant's willing, but ACHD's not?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Would you repeat your question, please?
Yes. I said, it sounds like the applicant is willing and that that's, as you said, was proposed. But you don't anticipate there's any possibility that, that ACHD would, would budge on that?
I don't anticipate so. I do a lot of impact fee work and, well, it, I, the subdivision will, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it'll generate 30 vehicle trips in the PM peak hour, which is one trip per household. And that's not a round trip. That's just, if you drive to the grocery store, that's one trip. Come home from the grocery store, that's a second trip. The good news is that when Pine Avenue punches through, a lot of the load that's occurring at Black Cat and Pine will probably shift eastward. So, and I'm happy to hear that staff is currently working on applications in that area because that, that will, that will change the geometry of the traffic in this area. So maybe we can just look forward to that happening and, and know that it will at least partially resolve some of the traffic issues that you are referencing.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Penelope, happy, happy Thanksgiving. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I, I want to be just direct with you. I'm really struggling with this rezone. For part of the reason that Councilwoman Pearl spoke about this access piece concern, just because the amount of lots you're trying to, to, to fit in there. Help me understand how we're, you know, my, my philosophy is always that with, if, if we're going to change it, if we're going to do a rezone, if we're going to do an annexation, that it's, it's improving our community. And I'm, I'm, that's where I start when I look at these. And I haven't been able to get past that. So, you know, I was supportive of this at the, at the R4. I'm just trying to figure out how our community benefits, how these future residents are going to benefit from this, what looks on this, on this revised preliminary plat as a jammed in set of lots.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you and happy Thanksgiving to you as well. The location of this subdivision is unique in that it, it lives somewhat between Nampa and Meridian. And there's a lot of jobs coming online in Nampa. So part of the rationale of the developer or the applicant is that there's a need for a variety of house price points in this neighborhood, especially with, for example, the Amazon jobs that are coming online. And I think they're hiring somewhere around 2,000 people. So part of the rationale is that it provides some variety in housing within this general vicinity. There is R8 in this area directly to the east of us in Chesterfield. There's R8 and there's R8 to the north of us as well. So I don't, I'm not sure exactly how, I don't see them as, as smashed in there. I don't mean to argue with you.
No, not at all. You're fine. You're in touch.
We have, we have quite a variety of lot widths in there. The, the widest ones are almost 60 feet. There's two lots that are, are just south of 60 feet. The lot along Black Cat Road are 48 feet wide. We've got a good variety of lot sizes, so we can have a good variety of house sizes in the subdivision. I just, in response, I think that the Horse Meadows will, will fulfill a pocket or a hole in the kind of housing that's available in this part of Meridian. Then I can get into the fact that from my transportation background, these folks don't have to go very far to get to the grocery store, the pharmacy, gas station, the interstate. There are, there's a school to the north. There are, there's a school to the south in between us and Franklin Road. So proximity to schools is very good with this subdivision. Joe and I've had a little bit of a disagreement over the distance to the park. I mapped it through the subdivision to the north and came up with a half, half a mile. But it's got parks, it's got the 10-mile pathway, which is six tenths of a mile away. So there are a lot of attributes, community attributes that are close to the subdivision. And my training leads to the idea that you want higher density in close proximity to, to services and amenities because it, it keeps trips down. It, it, I, I'm not quite sure how to explain.
Penelope, I, some of that I definitely agree with you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, a follow-up if I may.
That's my Cavanagh.
And Penelope, I don't think I've ever asked this question in the seven years I've been on the council because it's not something that I typically consider. But you brought it up, so it piqued my interest about the price of housing. And so what's the, what's the price point for these particular units?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my understanding that they're going to be in the low 200, excuse me, the high 200, low 300 range.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Penelope, I candidly am still very concerned about that street, but there's not any more conversation we can have. So I'm going to move on to another topic and that is the easements. So what is the expectation or the plan? It sounds like you guys are pretty confident that the other surrounding homeowners are going to sign off on these agreements or maybe you have some verbal agreements from them pending review of the documents that the attorneys are going to draft. What happens if the, they, they don't agree to it? Joe had said, you know, okay, well, then the plat will expire. But that's, you know, it's two years that the plat is, is active. So walk us through what happens if they don't. And if, you know, where you go from there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, we are pretty confident that we're going to be able to achieve that partial or easement modification. There is active development interest in the parcel to the south of us. And obviously they can't do anything with their property unless they have public road. So that's the first item. We, we haven't encountered any substantial objections to the idea. It actually improves things for them because I have been on that easement, traveling that road, and it's very difficult to get out of it. This, this pub, the new public road through Horse Meadows will improve their vehicle safety. It is possible that we won't be able to get those easement relinquishments. And that, that's a reality. But we've spent a lot of time with these folks and I don't, I don't think that there's any intention to give up until we have been able to accomplish what we are, are planning. That's part of the reason why sewer and water and pressurized irrigation are being extended all the way to the east property line. It's, it's a give. It's something that the developer is, is offering in exchange for their assistance. So we're going to proceed as if this is a, a, an accomplishable. If we can't get them, then the plat will die and someone else will take a run at it, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up please.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's just continue and we'll come back.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, Councilwoman Pearl.
So Penelope, I had seen a, a drawing somewhere in the file that had showed a potential road, road system for, if all of the surrounding properties were to develop. And it connects to Newland Street. I happen to own a home just three doors down from the boundary. And if I live there and I'm going to now exit my subdivision out using this exit onto Pine and not the exit I currently use because it'd be much faster. So I look at this not just as the 30 trips a day, but I look at this as all of the, the home, future homeowners from the property to the south because they're not going to exit onto Black Cat either. They're going to go through here. And then when this all gets connected to Newland Street, which is the plan eventually, they're all going to exit out this way. So I'd be really curious to know how many homes there could actually potentially be using this exit. Because that, that, I don't know if Joe can find that. It was just like a hand drawn little document that showed, here's what the streets could potentially look like when this entire area, all four or five of these parcels get, get connected eventually or that, you know. So I don't see this as, not only do I not see it as 30 trips because my concern is the people coming off of Black Cat, less so than the people that are leaving this subdivision, but also the intention is that they all get connected to Chesterfield number one. And Chesterfield number two technically connects to Chesterfield number one, which is a different, different subdivision, different HOA, different, you know. So really, truly, somebody from all the way, almost a half mile east of here could follow through neighborhood streets to exit out this exit that's 100 feet from Black Cat. That's, that's my main concern.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, understood. That's probably going to be a two-way flow, actually, especially after the Pine Avenue Bridge is constructed. When I say 30 vehicle trips, I just mean that there'll be 30 new vehicle trips. So, and for me to back away from the transportation mindset, I understand that there, there will be people in Chesterfield one and two that will modify their trip routes as a result of this. And you're referencing, staff ask us early in the process to provide a conceptual idea of what the local street network would be in that area. And that's what you're referring to. So I think that there'll be a, a variety of, of interflow that takes place. The, the number of people that are exiting onto Pine Avenue at our local street connection could be potentially lower because, especially after Pine Avenue is connected, because they're, they're eastbound and, and they'll want to travel local streets to get over to the 10-mile creek and then enter onto Pine Avenue. I think there'll be quite a bit of interchangeable traffic flow that occurs. And I, I assume that most people drive like I do, which is I prefer right-hand turns always. And so it might actually turn out to be a positive in terms of the changes of traffic that occur in that general area. There will be people entering Pine Avenue at our local street connection. And, and I understand your concerns. We would love to change that, but it's just one part of, of the benefit, I think, that the subdivision will offer. I'm sorry if I'm not answering your question. I do understand what you're asking for. I'm not sure that I can, can give you an answer other than the fact that traffic routes and patterns will change when these streets go in and there'll be 30 more trips generated in that area. How they travel and where they go is essentially anyone's guess, I guess.
There was a comment that came up earlier.
Dan Lukart is here. He's the real estate broker and local representative.
If, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Dan Lukart, 710 North Black Cat Road is our address. And I represent the, the owners. I just wanted to inject that we're real confident. We've talked to all three parties on the road of Quarter Horse. It's, it's really going to answer a problem that we haven't even talked about.
Mr. Mayor. Dan, if you can speak into the microphone, they're having trouble hearing you.
Is that, okay, is that good? The old Quarter Horse lane that goes in there that they've been using and continue to use is, is not a very good entrance onto Black Cat. ACHD really wanted that to go away when they did the easement back in 90. So we're improving that for them at our expense and they appreciate that. We're bringing the sewer and water and looping the irrigation like Penelope mentioned at our expense. And there's three parties that are well aware of what we're trying to do and trying to make that better and close that, close that lane off that would put it over on Pine. And we did line up exactly where ACHD wanted us to, which was straight across Pine from the existing subdivision. Even though it's not as far in foot, feet as we suggested, they, they wanted people to be able to look at each other when they pull up to facing stops. And you turn your signal on and you, you do like you do a four-way stop. You know, you, you rotate every other, you know, every other person gets to rotate to the right. So those are things that we, this has been an extensive, a lot of teamwork. I know Joe's really worked hard on this. Penelope's worked extremely hard. We've redrawn this seven times. It's taken us a, you know, it's, it's been a year worth of work. And the owners are, are super good guys and we're, we're doing everything we can to make it good for everybody. And, you know, the common areas have been increased. And again, seven drawings later, rock solid, Darrett Kerner has drawn this thing, you know, a dozen times. And Penelope's been on it. And we've done everything we can to make it good for everybody. So I really, the easement will get signed. We, we, I don't see any, there's, it's a win-win for everybody because the lane wants to be closed by ACHD. It's just a dirt road. It's, it's literally a, we're going to let them run through our subdivision and it's wider, they can turn. And they'll look across the street at Pine and, and they'll be able to work out of there with that other subdivision lineup where they've got it. So I appreciate the interest and, and your time as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I actually had a quick question possibly for that gentleman. I didn't catch his name. I, yeah, I'm not sure what, what the direction. Oh, my apologies, sir. Not sure the direction of council will be this evening. Certainly it seems like a couple of council members have concerns about traffic. If the city council were to attempt to issue an opinion to ACHD or to ask ACHD to, you know, revise their opinion about where on, on Pine this should exit onto. I know you've been through seven of these. It sounds like you have one with an entrance far to the east. Would, would you be open to, you know, gi- giving us a week or two to try to improve on that and, and possibly influence them if, if we can?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, I think that would be fine. If, if I could get Joe to pull up those, that first image that I gave him this evening, that shows kind of a universal view of the area. From a transportation perspective, if we moved that street as far east as we could, we'd need to be one lot east or west of the east property line. It actually straddles the access points that are on the other side of the street between us. It, it wouldn't be a bad location to have it. The offset would be greater. So, yeah, if we get it where the arrow is now, you can see that it, it's farther away from the street to the north than it would be the distance from Black Cat Road. And then obviously the other access points to the east of us are not even visible on that map. So it's not a bad location to have a road. And if you can accomplish that, we would be happy to, to incorporate it into the plat and, and revise it. That would be fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Lieutenant Harper.
I have a, just a.
I have a, just a quick question. Penelope, was there any discussions about traffic calming on that main roadway that comes into the subdivision? Since it's a straight shot, I think it's approximately a hundred and fifteen feet of travel. Just from a, a safety standpoint with younger families or small children, we're seeing those higher speeds on those straightaways, not having any type of traffic calming devices.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mayor, Mayor. I apologize. Now I understand what you're saying, especially with the common area in the center of the subdivision, the way it's located. ACHD goes through a, what they call a warrant process. And traffic calming devices such as speed bumps are, are not as easy to obtain as you might think. But maybe striping a crosswalk in there and putting some signage up would be a nice middle ground. And again, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, not so much, Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Yes, Lieutenant.
It's not, not so much speed bumps. I'm more referring to, to islands. They'll put islands in the middle, so it adds a little curvature to the roadway, forcing people to slow down as they, as they travel. I don't, again, I'm just, I'm kind of throwing that out there because we're seeing throughout the city, these, these longer straightaways causing some, some challenges with speed in our subdivisions.
Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant, I could see where maybe a short, not very big island in between Lot Five, which would be to the west and the common area. And of course, there couldn't be any parking along that section of the road. But that's one of the larger lots at forty-six hundred square feet. So it would eat into the lot, obviously, and it would eat into the common area a little bit. We would have to get permission from the Highway District to do that. But again, I don't see that that would be a substantial issue.
Councilwoman Holton.
One quick question, Penelope. I, I may have missed it, but that five-foot-wide micro path along the south side of Lot Seven, that was acceptable to you?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Further questions, Councilman Pearl.
Not so much a question. I, I want to say thank you to Penelope for allowing us to ask really candid, direct questions to you because I know we've thrown some pretty, you know, pretty significant ones. And thank you for answering them with such graciousness. So I just wanted to say that. And we really always appreciate an applicant who goes to the length and the effort that you have gone to to try to accommodate the requests from the multiple different groups and to still stick, stick with it and, and work hard for your client. I know the five acre, less than five acre pieces are tough, very, very tough. I wanted to say that, so I appreciate that very much. And just curious, a couple, I guess I do have one more question. So it sounds to me like perhaps you have had conversations with the neighbors to the east and the south, and they did not want to incorporate their properties into your development? Is that what we're hearing?
Mayor, Councilwoman, not in, in a rigid sense of the word. I think if the parcel to the south and southeast does develop, which it's looking like, I mean, they're very interested in doing something. It would, it would be a companion subdivision. And of, of course, the, the road would be in place already for them, at least most of their frontage. Were you thinking of some particular reason that, or way that they would be connected?
Mayor, if I may.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Not specifically, but we often, when we're making these decisions, prefer to see these properties developed together. So there's a couple of other corners that we've had in, in Meridian where we have really encouraged the three or more property owners that were all, that all had smaller sized lots, all adjacent to one another to work together to try to develop a piece that's bigger than this. And we've done it, I don't think, probably three times since I've been involved with the city. And so I just wanted to ask that same question that we've asked numerous other owners, which is, is it possible for, for this to be, instead of, instead of being piecemealed, we, we kind of like to see it. Not that I'm promoting larger residential developments. What I'm just saying is that we like to see more consistency with, with how the properties are developed. And so I know these are all intended to be medium-density residential. That's the intention, but it does get to be, I guess, challenging from a value standpoint. If you have, maybe you, they're all medium-density, but you've got developers that come in with really different rent, really different elevations, really different concepts of how the homes look and how they flow. So I just am trying to get this idea of, you know, if there's three five-acre properties that all develop with very different looks to them, it could be just a little bit funky, I guess, for lack of a better word.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, we'll do a little tour of the site. Immediately to the south of us is a small parcel that fronts on Black Cat Road. There's actually a historic structure on that.
Yeah.
So I don't anticipate anything happening with that. The gentleman that lives directly to the east of us, if that, if Paradise could exist on earth, I think they have it. They have the most amazing trees. It's awesome. Mr. Casey, who is all the way over next to Chesterfield, like I said, he's told us multiple times, he's not going to leave that property till he's in a box. So he, he rehabs, he's got a, he has a stable full of these amazing vintage vehicles. And when you go to talk to Mr. Casey, you need to factor in an hour to two hours just to take another tour of all the cars, which is fine. I'm a, I'm a former drag racer, so I don't mind that. But the, the piece to the south and southeast, which is embarking on a development, it may in fact be the same developer. Now I'm going to pull in my real estate background. Obviously, different jurisdictions, different cities have different looks. And anytime you stray too far away from what's generally in your vicinity in terms of architecture, you, you kind of get into trouble. And given that the, the, this next piece that's coming down the line is somewhat hidden from view, I would assume, based on absolutely nothing except my opinion and my background, that the homes in the next parcel to come down the line will be very comparable because they'll, they'll be consistent with what's around us and consistent with what's going in Horse Meadows. And I anticipate that kind of modern, traditional home that will, will continue on to the south of us. I don't see a lot of change in, in architecture. I understand the idea of binding the parcels together and doing a larger scale development. In this instance, given the personalities in the neighborhood, I'm not sure that we would be able to accomplish that.
There's only further questions for the applicant at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make one more comment. I appreciate that you recognized my efforts. There are times when I wish I could figure out how to quit sooner because I'm like, I'm a closer. I won't let go of something until I get it done. And it's just a personality trait that I have that I'm mostly appreciative of and occasionally very aggravated by. So thank you for your kind words.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, there were no, no persons signing up in advance.
Okay. If there's anybody on the Zoom call that would like to testify on this item, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom. Seeing no one else who'd like to testify, I guess I'd ask the applicant if they'd like to make any last comments. I'm seeing the shaking of no, so counsel, oh, never mind. I stand corrected.
That's all right. Mayor, council members, you all referenced the idea of waiting a couple of weeks for a final decision while you go back to the Highway District and see if you can convince them to change that access point. And that is an acceptable scenario if you decide to go that direction. Whatever can be done to make it the best product possible is in all of our best interests. So that, that's not an obstacle. Thank you.
So counsel, additional questions, comments?
Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I have some additional comments, but they can wait until after the public hearing is closed.
By the way, I, I guess that one thing is if there's any desire to go to ACHD, we should, we would want to continue the public hearing and not close it. So if it's related to that item, I would ask for them now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, then, yes.
Yes, one pro.
I, I'm so sorry for my voice. It is really getting stretched tonight. So I know I'm being very vocal on this, but it's, you know, all of us live in different areas of, of the city and we all drive in different places on a daily basis and get to have, you know, a lot more interactions with certain areas. And I would hope that each of my council members would speak up if they see an area of the city that they think could be compromised. And so I want to be really clear that my thoughts and decision on this are not because I live in this neighborhood, but simply because this is what I experience more frequently than maybe my other council members do. I can't think of maybe but one other time since I've been on council and, and in planning and zoning when I've, I've ever considered voting against approval of a project for something that the applicant has no control over. But in this situation, unless we do proceed to pursue some modification of ACHD's decision, that, that's likely how I will vote. And I, I feel, feel bad about that because I think the applicant has worked really hard and done as good of a job as they possibly can with what they have. But I truly think it would be a mistake for us to approve an exit that close to Black Cat. And I'm going to share that because I understand what Penelope is saying regarding the traffic patterns changing, which Pine gets expanded. But I would actually disagree. And the reason is because that once, so I don't know if you all have ever driven on Ten Mile Road, pretty much the first two or three hours in the morning and then in the afternoon, it's, it's backed all the way up to, from, from the interchange up past Pine Avenue towards Cherry Lane. So if I'm exiting out on Pine Avenue headed east to get to Ten Mile Road to take the freeway, I'm, I'm stuck there. I'm not making a right turn for a while. So what am I doing? I'm going back out to Black Cat. So if we're going to talk about the heaviest traffic flows of the day, people are still going to use Black Cat. And then let's add all of the numerous, numerous developments that have been approved north of this on Black Cat. And all of those are going to be heading south on Black Cat, which means anybody who is then still leaving the Pine and Black Cat intersection, taking a left headed south on Black Cat, is going to encounter everyone coming from the north because there's, I, I think I remember us discussing this. There's hundreds of lots that have been approved. Maybe, I don't want to misquote, I want to say somewhere around fourteen hundred or more have been entitled on the North Black Cat area. And they're, and they're going to access the freeway taking Black Cat. So I don't agree that Pine going through is just going to take everybody east. I think they're going to avoid Ten Mile because Ten Mile is so busy as it is. So I know it's really lengthy, really lengthy explanation on my part. But I, I, a lot of concerns that this is not just a sub. It's, there's, there's going to be three other area parcels that'll eventually connect, including all of Chesterfield, which is dozens of homes. And it's going to, they're going to want to come out and exit onto Pine Avenue in this location. So I said my piece about that. I would just highly caution, I, I am not, I, I don't have a challenge, I don't have a problem with the density in this. I don't, I'm not, I don't have a problem with this actual layout. I, I actually think it would have been better to put the common area back where it was originally. But, but my main concern is just the tra- the traffic flow. I, I, I don't, there's not a problem for me in, in the number of homes. The si- the size of the homes is bigger than I would have expected, but this really, truly is for me just, just a safety issue.
Thank you. Councilor Schrader.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate my fellow councilwoman's opinion and her insight about the traffic in that area. And I think a hundred feet sounds like a really short distance. We've been working on our relationship and influence with the Ada County Highway District. And I would hope that we could try to continue this and give it a shot to move that exit from the subdivision to make it safer and, and make it work better. I appreciate the price point, if they can deliver on it. Really hard these days to get affordable homes in Meridian. You know, I think it serves a purpose of workforce housing and especially, I, I think this is a good place for a little bit of density. I'm appreciative of the seven plats so far. It's hard to get these infill ones right. I think we, personally, I'm in favor of continuing and, you know, having council and staff and the mayor maybe send a letter or whatever communication we think might help to see if ACHD would, would consider a change here. That's just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Yeah, I, I clearly see the, the issue with traffic and I think it's worth an attempt to try. Joe, do we have any idea how long that type of review would take by staff, if they would even review our request?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holton, I have no idea. ACHD has not given a revised staff report in months to the changes in the plat. So I'm not sure what their response is going to be to this. Yeah, I did review the staff report quickly, just for the record. The, their horse meadows is required to construct the new local street a hundred and ninety-four feet from Black Cat. I'm not sure where that's measured from. I'm assuming it's probably centerline to centerline, give or take. So that is a little bit further than the hundred feet that I was visually trying to see on a small map.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I understand that, but also understanding Councilman Pearl's experience, that traffic in the morning at rush hour times is going to be backed up significantly. And just looking ahead, thanks to our quick city clerk, on December first, we have two hearings. We don't have a meeting on the eighth, the fifteenth. We have four hearings and on the twenty-second, we have four hearings. So I guess we can make an attempt, make a motion to delay and, and see what, where we could put that and, and go from there, if that's the desire of, of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Maybe some insight that could help the council in this conversation. Is, is it possible for me to share this screen that I have in front of me?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Neri, yes, just share a screen at the bottom of your screen and choose that.
So interestingly, this, I live in this area. This is Ten Mile and Chateau. So this is Bryniger Prairie and it's a larger lot. This is twenty acres, I believe, and it has ninety-four homes on it. So originally, ACHD was going to require the access right here, which is about a hundred feet for ninety-four homes. And so the, the applicant and the city pushed very hard to move the entrance here to avoid exactly what the council's talking about, is that close proximity. You've got cars turning left and right. And this, as you can see in this aerial, this is a lot more than five homes. There's only five homes on that road. And they, they were wanting the, this connection for that very reason. And the city did push back and say, no, we were going to approve the plat with it here. And so they were able to convince ACHD at that time to move the entrance here. And again, you're getting a very similar setup. You've got a straight road, you've got a park, city park right there, you've got a number of homes here. And that close proximity believed to be very dangerous and a safety concern. So it is some precedent for ACHD to reconsider. And so I thought that might help if you're wanting that, that helps planning or whoever's going to have this conversation with ACHD say, look, you've done this before and this was much larger. Now, again, it's a larger parcel, I understand. But to Councilmember Pearl's point, the south of this will end up being a large number of parcels. So they've done it before, maybe they would reconsider.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Holton.
Is this what Mr. Neri? Is this what Mr. Neri would refer to as Exhibit A?
Probably.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
So Mr. Neri, thank you so much for this. If you, if you pull the screen down a little bit, you see the street to the north, which is, does that say Swanson? They're just, yes. So this, this is almost identical to what we're talking about. The difference between this and that one is that the road near Black Cat dead ends. It doesn't even connect. It literally at the, in the north of Swanson, it would be like a dead end up there. Right? Go, go north with your pointer.
Yeah, this connects all the way through.
Right. And the, and in the, in, of a Black Cat, if you go north on Swanson with your pointer, keep going, keep going, it would dead end right there. And there's maybe six or seven houses in that little cul-de-sac. And it can't go anywhere else because there's a canal north of there, and then there's another subdivision. So there's not even traffic coming from anywhere else to the north to come down through to connect to Pine. That's why I don't understand why ACHD is requiring it to be lined up.
Oh, Joe, I mean, I think that they've given you some good communication. This is obviously was not acted on at the commission level. This was a staff report per this item. I think we'll begin with those conversations, which could make it a very quick conversation or maybe a more lengthy conversation, depending upon the interaction with staff at this point in time. So just for, at this point in time, it's not necessarily ACHD unless they have to go against what their, their code states, which then could take months instead of weeks. So I think we're at a best guess on when it would be appropriate time to open this up and maybe even suggest the start of the year.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
I'm buried for the foreseeable future, so it doesn't matter to me. Secondly, reviewing their ACHD staff report, they, the existing location of the, the proposed street and the one on the north side doesn't meet their policy already. I believe at some point during our discussions that the offset between the North Trequire Street on the north side and then the proposed street to the further east on this parcel wouldn't meet their offset requirements there either, at least between the two. If I remember correctly. So again, I think either way, ACHD is going to have to do some real determination on this parcel to figure that out. So I second the mayor's comment regarding how long this might take.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hogan.
I, I suppose we could just continue this public hearing to a particular date. And if it's not resolved, we continue it again, and for, if that's the situation. And I know time is money, but and if, if it's going to take, be a little bit longer than quicker, maybe we go for the 22nd of December to give us some time, give staff time to have that discussion and see what moves forward. At, is that one of those? Mr. Mayor, I would move that we continue this public hearing on H 2020 0060 to December 22nd.
Excellent.
I have a motion, a second, to continue this until, this until December 22nd. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor. Just as usual, when we continue these projects, is there a specific topic that will be continued to? Or will the whole applicant, application be willing to be discussed again?
Mr. Mayor, to add to that, I, I think since we may have two additional council members, having a fuller discussion might be worth, worth the time.
And it could be a different plat altogether that this council technically has never seen. If that is located, you're going to, you're redoing.
Good point, Mr. Mayor.
At a moment. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Just to mention that I'm sure council would all, if somehow signing a letter or making a phone call accelerates this in any way, I'm sure everyone's happy to try to, you know, help this be a priority for them.
I thank you. I think we'll, we'll lean upon staff at first so that we don't do X, do stuff outside of the public view in terms of conversations regarding land use hearings.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Any further conversation or do, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion is agreed to, and we'll continue this until December 22nd. Thank you very much. And Joe, if you have any issues, let us know. Okay, next item on the agenda is item five ordinance under second reading of ordinance number 20-1905. I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 1011, Regarding Adoption of the 2018 International Building Code, 2018 International Residential Code, 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, 2018 International Existing Building Code, and Respect of Local Amendments, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1012, Regarding Amendments to the International Building Code, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1013, Regarding Amendments to the International Residential Code, Repealing and Replacing Meridian City Code, Section 1014, Regarding Amendments to International Energy Conservation Code, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1023B, Regarding Plumbing Permit and Inspection Fees, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1033E, Regarding Electrical Permit and Inspection Fees, Repealing and Replacing Title 10, Chapter 4, Meridian City Code, Regarding Adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code and Local Amendments thereto, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1051, Regarding Adoption of 2018 International Mechanical Code, 2018 International Fuel Gas Code, 2018 International Residential Code, Parts 5 and 6, and Respect of Local Amendments, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1052, Regarding Amendments to 2018 International Mechanical Code, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1053, Regarding Amendments to International Fuel Gas Code, Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1054, H Through M, Regarding Amendments to Part 5 Mechanical and Part 6 Fuel Gas of the 2018 International Residential Code, Adopting a Savings Clause and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there anybody that would like this ordinance read in its entirety? Seeing no one, it will be brought back next week for third reading. Next item is ordinance number 20-1906. Ask clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain city-owned real property at auction, consisting of approximately 0.218 acres of, located at 345 West Winnipeg Street, Ada County, Parcel R 5672060442, Legal Parcel Number 0442, Number 5472, Ada County, Idaho, Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest on behalf of the city, Meridian, the deed, and other documents necessary to complete the transaction, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Having heard this ordinance read by title, is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hogan.
I move to approve ordinance number 20-1906 with suspension of rules.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-1906 under suspension of the rules and discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion is agreed to, and the ordinance is adopted. Is there any item under future meeting topics? Item number seven. We do not need it. So do we need to make any specific motion, Mr. Neri? Can we call?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hogan.
I move that we vacate our executive section, session that we had scheduled.
Second.
Motion, a second, to vacate the executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it? And the last item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hogan.
Move adjournment.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and we are adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Aye.